Evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Monday, May 5th, Cinco de Mayo, regular Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. We are in the City Hall Council Chambers. And it is, let's open this meeting at 6:31 PM. That is the first thing we do is a call to order, the roll call certification. We do have two, three, four, five, six members with Commissioner Eisenberg being the lone commissioner that's out tonight. For the introduction and agenda and format of hearing, our wonderful staff takes that, so I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Chair. Good evening, everyone. Tonight, we're going to start with a call to order, followed by a staff report. Then the applicant will have an opportunity to have their presentation, followed by public comments in support or opposition. Please state your name and address for the record, and please be brief and to the point within a three-minute timeframe. Afterwards, the commission and staff will have their discussion, and the commission will then vote to recommend approval as presented, approval with conditions, denial of the request, or to table the item. City Council's consideration of tonight's zoning change and CUP will be on Monday, May Tonight, on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes. And tonight, on new business, we have a zoning change along McCard Road and a conditional use permit along Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm assuming the conditional use permit is not going to take as long, in fact, it should be quite short. So to let those persons get in and get out, why don't we handle that one first? Is there an issue with that?
You're welcome to do that, as long as there's no objection from any of the members of the commission.
No objection noted. So we'll do that, but first, let's go to consent agenda. So the only item is, again, the approval of the minutes. Does anyone wish to pull that from the consent agenda? If not, let's have a motion and a second for approval, and we'll vote.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Haskins was the second. Oh. Hey, I'm glad I messed up there. Thank you. Always try to get it right for our record. All right, so all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Measure passes unanimously. We'll move on, then. Let's handle, then, under new business. Let's handle the CUP 2025-0107. And this is a public hearing, a request by Gulf Tech Roofing and Services applicant on behalf of Hale Properties LLC owner for approval of a conditional use permit, CUP, for an expansion to an existing auto repair minor use within the general business GB district on approximately 0.9125 acres of land, the general location being 10-331 Broadway Street in Pearland, Texas. Let's start with a motion and a second for approval.
Motion for approval.
Commissioner Henrick, second.
Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the commission. My name is Patrick Bauer, and I'll be presenting the CUP request tonight. So as mentioned, this is for an expansion of an existing auto repair facility, and specifically the applicant is proposing a 480-square-foot expansion to the building on the backside, which will essentially house tires for the business. This is a discount tire. And the CUP is required as the use, auto repair minor use requires a CUP in the general business district. So even though it's an enlargement, anytime you make a new expansion to the use that requires a CUP, you need essentially a new CUP for that use. And so to date, staff has not received any comments in support or against the request. Just kind of going through the subject property zoning, as well as the surrounding uses, the subject property outlined in yellow on the left-hand image is within the general business zoning district, and it's surrounded by general business as well to the east, some general commercial to the north and the west. And then to the south is, you'll notice there's not a color, and that's because this is within the extraterritorial jurisdiction, so there's no zoning for the properties to the south. And the uses are predominantly a mixture of non-residential uses. You have the self-storage to the north and west, multi-center retail to the east, another shopping center to the south in the ETJ, and there's an adjacent Walmart just a little bit further to the west in the ETJ. And then looking at the future land use for the property, it is within the business park place type, and that same place type kind of mostly surrounds it on three sides. And then you'll notice that there's kind of a light pink color to the south and further to the west, and that's the commercial center place type. Looking at the history of the property, it was originally annexed into the city in 1998, platted in 1999, and then that existing building that sits there today was developed with that existing auto repair facility in 2004. And here we get a look at the subject property. This is the actual survey for the property with that expansion. So Broadway Street is actually on the bottom of your screen, so this expansion is on the backside of the building, and outlined in yellow is that 480-square-foot expansion to house tires. And it should be noted that where the yellow is, currently, there's actually a dumpster there, and they are proposing to essentially move the dumpster slightly to the northeast just a little bit, and then put it in an enclosure that'll meet all of the UDC's requirements. Just looking at some of the review criteria, staff found that the requests met the comprehensive plan as the business park place type has some secondary land uses that talk about commercial uses and retail uses, so this would fall under, the existing auto repair facility would fall under that secondary land use. In terms of the thoroughfare plan, the subject property does have front on Broadway Street, which is a major thoroughfare to be widened, and this is part of that textile widening. And then in terms of the UDC, the proposed improvements will be subject to any other requirements, such as setbacks for the expansion. And then in terms of utilities, the subject property does have access to utilities currently. Just looking at the approval criteria for a conditional use permit, staff found that the requests met all seven of the criteria. As mentioned just previously, the proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the thoroughfare plan. So therefore, staff recommends approval of the requested CUP. And that concludes staff's report.
Thank you for that. Great report. Is the applicant here, and does the applicant wish to make a presentation? I'll just say it out loud. You're here, but you don't wish to make an applicant presentation. You're fine, and you're here for questions if we have them, if you're in discussion. Thank you. That was an affirmation there, for the record. All right, so are there any persons wishing to speak for or against this item? Any persons wishing to speak for or against this item? Seeing no movement or raise of hands, we'll move then to staff, commission, applicant discussion. Any discussion? You had me at new tires. Free, though, right? Yeah. I do attend your store regularly. So if there's no discussion, we'll move to the vote. All those in favor, we do have a motion and a second for approval, so all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Measure passes six to zero, and that then brings us to the item. Thank y'all for coming. Y'all don't have to stay for this. Next one, if you don't want to. That does bring us to the original number one under new business. Thank y'all for your patience to let us handle that. Consideration and possible action. This is a zone change, and a zone change number 24-27. This is a public hearing by Andrew Alaman, Beacon Land Services LLC, Texas applicant on behalf of BEGP1, or I, I'm assuming that's a one, LLC of Texas, owner for approval of a zone change from suburban residential, which is SR12 District 2 Plan Development, PD District, creating a planned development of approximately 7.9731 acres of land to identify as the McCard Road and Adamo Lane Plan Development. The general location being 8210 McCard Road in Pearland, Texas. A motion for approval in a second, please.
Motion to approve, Commissioner McDonald.
Second, Commissioner Haskins.
All right. With that, staff report, please.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Katie Peterson, and I am presenting this report tonight. The summary of the request, this is a zone change from SR12 to planned development for a 73 build-to-rent attached townhouse-style but multifamily residential development on approximately 7.9 acres of land. This was originally heard at the April 7th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and so tonight's presentation will mostly be a what has changed since that presentation, as well as just a brief overview to refresh memories. The staff recommendation at the April 7th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting was approval with various conditions pertaining mostly to the language that would help enforce the PD, as well as a few other items that were regarding the language or clarification of items within the planned development documents. The Planning and Zoning Commission did vote to postpone the request to allow time for the applicant to work through those requested deviations and discuss the access to the site with staff. Updates to the PD document since that April 7th meeting summarized here, there have been no changes made to the access. Following that April 7th Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the applicant did come in and meet with staff, including members from planning and the engineering department, and the number of trips generated by this development would not warrant any changes to McCard Road that would require a full traffic impact analysis, as long as the traffic impact analysis worksheet, which will be required as part of the plating process, doesn't throw any surprises that are not anticipated based on the documentation that we have at this time. So at this time, there was no need to change anything regarding the access. They did not. They have made modifications to the hierarchy of the formatting. That was basically just how things were lettered and numbered, so that when we go to review an application for something that comes within here, we would have an easier time saying, hey, please reference section A1 little B, instead of having to duplicate our numbers and make it harder for us to enforce. They also included language in the PD document, including the unit count in the verbal language of the, or the written language of the PD document, rather than just on the exhibits. They adjusted the design percentage after approval to ensure that we knew how much could change without having to come back for a PD amendment. Should there need to be minor changes, less than 10% come forward. That is standard of most PDs that we see before us. They included the sidewalk material. They included the language about utility meters and how there will be a master meter for the site. They included a towing contract requirement for the PD, so that any vehicles that were parked illegally that would block the fire lane could be towed, and we have the ability to enforce that, not only on the police side, but now from the planning and zoning division as well. They included additional clarification on the playground material. They updated some line color. Again, the line color was something that was labeled, but it was just a little bit close in color and made it challenging for us to be able to read. This way, should this be something that makes changes to it 20 years in the future when we've all retired happily, we will still understand what it is that needs to be in what location within this PD. They also added material requirements for the residential buildings to ensure that those were not only shown in different hatch marks on the building, but also labeled in the document as well, so that it was easier to enforce. They added a water feature to the detention area and identified where the AC units would be located on the design plan. There were a handful of items that were not either fully addressed or were not addressed that were identified in the staff report from the April 7th meeting, or not updated to the extent in which staff felt comfortable leaving it off as a condition. Those items included the fence material clarification. There were still a couple locations where wrought iron versus tube aluminum, while either one is a permitted material, we just need to make sure that we understand which one is being permitted. And if there is going to be a tube aluminum fence that is being proposed, we get a tube aluminum that is something that is not challenging to look at, so traditional finials, capped bases, so that it has the same appearance as a wrought iron without being wrought iron. Additional floor plans and anti-monotony standards with varying elevations. They did provide some updates to this, however, staff did not feel that they were varying enough that it met the intent of staff's original comment. We did receive a couple additional elevations this morning, so staff has not had a chance to fully vet those, but the applicant will be able to speak more about those when they make their presentation, should they choose to do so tonight. We did include a copy of those in this report, so that you could, in the presentation, I'm sorry, so that you could see those here on the screen as well. While they showed the ASC unit location, they did not show that in the language, so it was shown on the design plan, but we'd like a little bit of language added to it that should be fairly straightforward, just like in writing, describe what has been shown on that design plan. And then additional language specific to the plantings along the southern property line, as that's the side that is most near to a residential property. And then the material for the clubhouse, we did request in the original staff report that it be updated to 100%. It is showing on the elevation that we have provided as 100%, but we are only seeing one elevation of it, and it's identified as 50%. So we'd like that updated to be 100%. Prior to this meeting, as of about noon today, we had received six public comments in support and seven public comments against the application. However, it should be noted that one of the people who wrote in against it did provide opposition and triplicate, so we have three public comments in that seven count that are from the same person. As a recap for the zoning here, it is in the SR12 with colon mixed use to partially the east with more SR12 to the northern part of the east. It has residential estate to the north there across McCard Road, and it is suburban residential 12 to the south as well. The undeveloped land is to the north. There's a boat repair shop that's tucked in the corner of the northeastern side there, as well as single-family residential on the east, south, and southern portion of the western side of this property. The future land use map of this in our comprehensive plan identifies this area as urban living, with urban living being identified as the primary uses being town homes, duplexes, patio homes, apartments, and live-work units, with secondary uses being those community uses such as civic, institutional, schools, parks, et cetera. Here's an aerial of the site. So we've got one from McCard Road. On the right-hand side here, you're seeing, looking at the boat repair shop into the site this way, and then this one is from the intersection of Adamo and McCard, looking into the site again. I can go back to any of these slides as you need later in the presentation. This is just a recap of the design plan. This is the design plan that has been provided. The only update that you're really seeing on this screen here is that they've added the water feature to the detention pond. The rest of the site is, the design plan portion of this is the same as it previously was, as are the requested deviations from the requirements of the base zoning that they're proposing, which is the multifamily. These were the elevations that they provided in the formal submittal to be included in the review that is reflected in the staff report that you have. I will go into these a little bit more, but we've got two different designs here. Staff found that these looked pretty similar, as they were just an inverse of the material, so you have the same base building and just, you've dressed it a little differently. And then here are the floor plans. I've circled the changes to the end cap. This is just the end floor unit, and then all of the other interior units would have the same finish. And then, again, no changes have been made to the clubhouse, but I included it here should you need to reference it. They have identified that the play structure would be commercial grade. It was intended to be that way, but we just wanted it in writing, so they've done that. And we found that it still meets the same criteria as it did previously for the establishment of a planned development district. It's still in conformance with the comprehensive plan, thoroughfare plan, and the utilities, as it has access to water and sewer along McCard. And none of the PD approval criteria have been changed either. The items, I'm going to go through these, but I'm not going to actually read through them entirely on this screen. I've put some images on the following screens, but this is found in the staff report, so you can take a look at it there for the full wording. However, just to give a brief summary, the first one is that we'd like to see the fence language updated. Here's where it shows that it's the aluminum tube, but then it also calls it out as wrought iron. In the rest of the body, it calls it out as aluminum tube fencing with a wrought iron appearance, so we'd just like to see that reflected here as well. The second one is the transparency standards. There are three buildings which face towards McCard Road for the residential units, which means they will need to have the 25% transparency that's required in the corridor overlay district. The elevation that we're seeing here, as well as the site plan, I'm sorry, the floor plan that we're seeing, oops, I clicked, does not appear to meet that 25% requirement. So we'll need to ensure that at least those three, and if they'd like to include additional transparency on internal-facing-side units, that would be excellent, but it is not a requirement. The requirement is for those facing McCard Road. The third item is the crushed gravel trail. So there's a 10-foot maintenance berm requirement that has to go around the detention pond. Our engineering department has indicated that the crushed gravel is not going to be pervious enough to be able to be used as a crushed gravel trail surrounding that as well. So either the area surrounding that detention pond needs to be increased to provide the maintenance berm and a crushed gravel trail, or the crushed gravel trail removed. Since that is not included in their counts for their necessary open space for the site, and it hasn't been identified as one of the amenities in the previous versions, it isn't something that is a requirement to have that crushed gravel trail, so it could just be removed. And then the fourth item is that the AC units, I've highlighted them because they are very small on this design plan, and I just took a snip of it, but you can see where they have placed all of those HVAC units and then put plant screenings around it. So it has been shown on the design plan, but we'd like to see it written as well, so that there's words that we can tie it to when we need to, when those apartments are coming in, or somebody decides to propose an additional unit or something in the future. And then we have the recommended changes. So the first ones are things mostly for enforcement and/or to meet code requirement, and these are the items that would make the design, in staff's opinion, more elevated and meet that PD requirement, rather than just a straight zoning, but is, there are about five items there. So the first is the anti-monotony and the transparency. Again, like I mentioned, we need the 25% transparency on at least those three buildings, and then we'd like to see something that is not just an inverse of the same material. They have identified the percentage of the material that will be used, which was something we identified in the first version. And then these are the elevations that they provided this morning. While staff has not reviewed these, the changes that are shown on this version are more successful than the version that was submitted formally with that last set in basic appearance. So I have not done any math on the amount of transparency that has been provided. I have not looked in depth at the amount of each material that is being written out in this. So if the commission feels that this is an appropriate modification with the additional elevations here, language would need to be added to the PD document, as well as having these included in the PD document for what those elevations will look like. The major changes that you're seeing here that make it a little bit different, I worked with architecture in a former life, and so taking a look at these, instead of just having the gable roofs, they've flipped to having a front-facing hip roof on some of these elevations, incorporating smaller gables on the front, and then having their expression line raised up a little higher on this one, which gives the scale of the building a little bit higher midpoint. So when you're going to be at a pedestrian level walking through this, it will look drastically different with the expression line halfway through the second floor, as opposed to sitting right above the garages. So they will look a little bit different as you walk through it. They do all complement each other, in my opinion, as well. So these are more successful than the last version, which was just the, taking it and turning the brick to stucco and the stucco back to brick. We would need to see the floor plans for those as well. The floor plans show the end unit, as well as the typical floor plan. So again, this is still just that one and two, which was the anti-monotony not being quite where we were looking for. And then the transparency, we did not receive any additional floor plans this morning, but the only change to these floor plans is that the end unit has additional windows, two on the second floor and one on the first floor here. The third item was the southern property line landscaping. They have shown visually on the design plan since the first iteration of this that was presented to you all, additional plantings along this elevation compared to the other sides of the property. However, they do not describe how they're going to supplement that area, which is what staff had requested. They have identified that they plan on increasing the caliper size of the trees, the street trees within it, to be a three-inch caliper, while our code only requires a two-inch. So they have identified that they're going to be bigger, but not how the spacing will be in surplus of that which is required. And that's what we're looking to see there. So it's a fairly minor addition that we would need, however, we would like to see that in there, so that we've got some protection against that southern property line. The fourth one is the clubhouse square footage and the facade material for the clubhouse. The clubhouse material, or the clubhouse square footage, is identified in the body of it as 4,000 square feet, and then on the design plan is 21. So we just need a little bit of clarification as to either how that's breaking out, since it does appear to be a single-story building, or those revised to be consistent. And then the facade material, again, it says it's a 50% masonry finish. If you look in the keynotes for the elevation that we have, it does say that it's cementous fiber fascia, standing seam metal roof, bricks, brick trim, stone veneer finish with decorative louver and stucco. So all of that wood, the decorative trim, maybe not, but the, all of the materials that they're proposing on this elevation are 100% masonry with minor trim detailing not masonry. But we don't see the other elevations, so we just want to make sure that that's either addressed in the language, well, addressed in language and addressed visually. With that, staff's recommendation with this is that while there are opportunities for staff to continue to work with the applicant, to revise those remaining items in the staff recommendation section, both for the enforceability and those that staff feels would make it a more elevated design, prior to the city council meeting or the final approval of this planned development, it does meet the review criteria, and staff recommends approval with the conditions that were outlined in this report. That ends staff report.
Thank you for that conference report. That brings us to the portion here where it's applicant presentation, is the applicant here, and I see the applicant getting up. Thank you, sir. If you'll just announce your name and address for the record, we're starting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name's Andrew Alaman from Beacon Land Services, 1304 Langham Creek, Suite 410 in Houston, Texas. Staff did such a good job reviewing everything that we submitted. I don't know that we submitted. I don't even really need to use my flash drive. Obviously, the major change after we turned in our last set of documents was the new elevations. Um, and we're obviously okay with everything that staff just went over. So we're in full support. If you do make a motion to approve, everything that staff added as conditions, we're completely okay with. Uh, just want to reiterate, we've, we've talked with a lot of the citizens. I stayed here for an hour and a half after the last meeting going over the development with some of the citizens and just talking about development in general. Um, I think a lot of the folks understand that McCard is a growing area, but it's not ready for like a high-rise apartment complex yet. Uh, so this, this is what we're presenting as a developer to meet that need. So these are not stacked units. It's not one dwelling unit on top of another. This is a ground entry. It, it looks like a townhome, but it's an apartment complex, but it has the feel and it, and it's of a townhome development. And it's also in line with the future land use plan again, which does call for a higher density multifamily, but we don't believe that this is ready for a higher density than, than what we're showing. So I think after everything we've done, working with staff, bringing the density down, changing the design standards, adding a bunch of new amenities, uh, providing a lot more spacing between the property lines and the buildings where we first had them. Now you're looking at a whole parking field plus some, uh, then obviously the detention area provides a huge buffer. So all of those things put together, I think, make a pretty good product and meet the intent. Again, like this is more of a transition type development than just a, let's go full bore into a multifamily type concept. So this, this addresses the, you know, what we think is a good transition use and a good use for the property. And, uh, I'm available if you have any questions.
Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
If that ends your applicant presentation, we'll move then to the next item, which is persons wishing to speak for or against. Um, and since some of you took the time to fill out one of these green cards, we'll, uh, we'll go in order. Um, as our former mayor used to say years ago, if, uh, if you agree with, I agree with my neighbor, that's fair to say. Uh, each person is going to be given three minutes, but if you want to just say that in lieu of time, feel free to say that. Um, I did notice that there were some for and some against, so I think it's fair that we call on everyone. Um, but uh, again, uh, and I should have said this, when you do go up there, we do want to match you up, the correct person up to the green card. So if you will state your name and address for the record, uh, and then get started on your, on your talking points. So the first one we have is a Mr. Jeff Potts.
Sorry, can I have that? All right. Good evening, y'all. My name is Jeff Potts. Um, I currently am somewhat homeless. I used to live at 1801 Adamo Lane, Pearland, Texas. I'm building a house now on the east side, uh, and I'm here, uh, to speak on behalf of the Adamo Lane neighborhood. Some of them will come up and speak in a few minutes. Um, but having, uh, talked with them, uh, and as someone who still drives down McCard Road a lot, uh, I think that there are still significant concerns with the development as proposed. Uh, I think we all can agree that McCard is going to develop. And as Kevin Cole said back in December, looking at the first iteration of this of 100-plus, uh, we need to examine it and plan accordingly between the traffic circle and 288. Uh, and then in the last meeting in April, I believe it was Commissioner Eisenberg that said, this is not the right project and it's not in the right place. And that's true. Uh, it's not the right project. It's not in the right place. Uh, I'm going to let the neighborhood talk about a lot of this, but there are going to be two, um, principal points that I would like to make and others will talk on this. Uh, first of all, there's not really a need for it here. The townhomes at Lake Parker there, they were never, uh, expanded, the 137 units that were going to be built. Uh, in fact, they've got four weeks free rent right across the street right now. So there's really no commercial unmet need here. There's no need to change the suburban designation. But more importantly, for me is the traffic issue. I still drive across McCard all the time to visit my children on the west side. And what you've got is a 73-unit, presumably more than 100 cars that are going to be coming out of that. And when they come out, most of those people are going to go west. And that is going to mean they're going to come out, cross the lane of traffic and try to do a U-turn. Um, that isn't going to work. And I was a little dismayed to hear that even though this issue has been brought up repeatedly, that the city still has not done a traffic flow analysis for either how that will work today or how it's going to work in the future. It is kind of interesting to me that the developer now has added an exit onto Adamo Lane down there at the bottom part, presumably understanding that this whole pull out and do a U-turn thing isn't going to work. Um, the problem is Adamo Lane is not a city street. It says it is in the packet, but it's really not. Because if you look at Adamo Lane, it's 14 feet across. It's asphalt. It has nowhere to pull off. If you want to pass somebody, you've got to pull halfway into the ditch. So I don't think that's going to work from a traffic perspective to have 100-plus cars trying to leave a 70-unit apartment complex and go up and merge onto McCard Road. Uh, the other thing that wasn't talked about tonight-
Sir, can you wrap it up? You got, your three minutes is up.
Okay. Uh, last thing is no one talked about drainage. And some of the other folks will talk about drainage. So I think there's still work that needs to be done. Uh, the traffic flow plan needs to be done and drainage has to be addressed.
Thank you, sir. The second person that, that I have here is, uh, Mr. William Hunter.
Uh, yes, William Hunter, 1905 Washington Irving in Pearland. Uh, I, uh, I was born and raised on Orange Street in Pearland in 1949. And over time, I've watched Pearland grow from a bedroom community to a thriving city. Uh, when this started, years ago, it started to grow. A former mayor had a slogan, Pearland, a great place to live. The proposed development will provide homes for growth and it benefits the Pearland community in several ways. Uh, uh, job growth, uh, helps existing businesses for people that shop in Pearland. Uh, also helps with new growth, new businesses are formed in Pearland. Uh, many of them have opened recently. And Pearland has grown and this growth has expanded our city to such ways. We now have a mini medical center. And, and this growth benefits a thriving community and the city. So I urge you to approve this measure for development and continue to make Pearland a great place to live. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Um, I have here next, um, and it says owner developer, Ali Hassan, 43 Capital.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Ali Hassan, 10190 Katy Freeway, Suite 100, Houston, Texas, 77043. So we've had this discussion before in this room and I sincerely appreciate the opportunity to present, uh, this again to you, Mr. Miss, the commissioners and all the citizens of City of Pearland. We have put a lot of work into this with the city staff to ensure that we provide something that meets the needs of the city, along with falling fully in line with the future land use plan. We understand some of the concerns of the neighbors. We've engaged them extensively over months. Uh, this is not the first time they're seeing this. In fact, you know, we showed this to, to the neighbors before we even came to you guys. And we've always held the belief that as professional managers of communities of over 800 units across Texas, is that when we go into a neighborhood, we only add value. So our goal is to add value to the neighbors, to the community in general. And I will leave you guys with, and I'll keep it short, but leave you with something very important as a data point. Cities run based on not just the homeowners and people who live there, but also renters who live there. A lot of our teachers and firefighters, teachers who teach our kids in Pearland ISD, and the firefighters who run to protect us, and the policemen. Average salary in the City of Pearland is about $58,000 annually. In order for a family to not be considered rent burdened or, uh, housing cost burdened, their housing costs must be no more than a third of their salary. That puts an average rent of about 1450 a month. In the City of Pearland, that average right now is 2,300. There's a gap of $850. The only way you fill that gap is by adding more supply. By adding anything else as an excuse to not put more supply in the city, we're going to continue to price out families that help run the city. And I'll learn my case for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for those comments. Um, also I have something for applicant here, or it says applicant in the comments. Andrew Alaman, Beacon Land Services. You're, you're good? And we'll move to Mario DeJulian. I hope I said that correct. Again, name and address for the record, please, sir, to match up with the card.
Uh, good evening. My name's Mario Hugalan, 1738 Stone Road, Pearland, Texas. And I'd like to defer my three minutes to Mr. Jeff Potts, if, if it's, if it's allowable.
Chair, the rules for public speaking do not allow deference of one person's time to another person's time.
I, I just wanted to listen to his drainage, uh, presentation.
And he is welcome to provide Mr. Potts' drainage presentation, but he cannot give his time to somebody else.
Well, then again, I'll, I'll go ahead and, uh, say, uh, I'm for what Mr. Potts is saying. Uh, we don't need any more, uh, more of a multifamily, uh, at this point. Cause we do have that lakes of, uh, townhomes across the street. And I don't, you know, we just wanted to keep the neighborhood at a single family, you know, houses, not townhomes. That's all I want to say.
Thank you, sir. All right. And then I have next to Mr. Kenneth Jost, I believe. While he's walking up there, I'll go ahead and tell you who's next so you can be ready. Uh, Mr. Robert Garner will be next.
All right. Uh, my name is Kenneth Jost. I live at 1813 Adamo Lane in Pearland. And I just want to say the people who want to do this will take their money and be gone. The people that live on Adamo will have to live with the consequences. 75 apartments is a lot. Thanks.
Thank you for that. And I see Mr. Garner making his way up there. And, uh, since that works so well, let's tell you who's next. If I can, we'll hear Benito Juarez will be next.
My name's Robert Garner. I'm at 8126 McCard. I live directly east of this. As I spoke last time, I'll reiterate with what Mr. Potts said. We already have a drainage problem. Uh, his PowerPoint wasn't able to show the issue that we have further down Adamo. Again, the, uh, problem with the traffic flow has been, uh, brought to light. Also, um, we've talked about this at the last meeting. There is on the drawings a exit from the, uh, apartments that comes out on Adamo. We don't have room for a fire truck. We don't have room for cars to be able to pass. I understand that that is something that could be corrected. But this project is a beautiful project. It's just not in the right place. I understand that we're going to have growth. And as McCard came through, we don't have the complete plan of what is allowed, what's supposed to come in. But it just does not appear, when we already have an apartment complex, catty corner that's not full, that this is not the correct place to do this. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And I welcome then Mr. Benito. Please say your last name because I couldn't read it.
Valdez.
Valdez.
Benito Valdez, 1738 Adamo. I'm actually on the south of that property. So my property, um, uh, property line is up against this development. So I'm directly impacted by, uh, by this proposed development. Um, I spoke up here last, uh, last month. I'm not opposed, uh, for this to be developed. Um, there's a couple of stuff that I don't think the city, the planning zoning commission, or this, the, the, these wonderful people, uh, here on my right that spoke about is, how is this going to work? Okay, yes, now we got a gable roof instead of a, a hip roof, and we got more brick and more stucco. Great, right? That, I'm not concerned with what it was going to look. I'm sure our architectural committees in the City of Pearland are going to do well and make sure it is going to look good for generations to come. My concern is the functionality of it. How is this going to work? How is traffic going to work? How is traffic going to come in and out? How are emergency vehicles going to come in and out? Um, another thing is that the stress uh, onto the infrastructure of the city. Now, can we support this? Can the cities, can the city schools support this? I know this is zone for Aloha Elementary, which is already packed with, um, with the, packed already and it's got, um, uh, you know, temporary buildings to house students, which is, that's a whole nother issue for a whole nother, you know, agenda. But I just want the city and, and, and you guys that, that kind of are our voice as citizens to see, all right, how is this going to work? Not right now, not in five years, 10 years, 15 years, uh, down the road. How is this going to incorporate? How is this going to integrate into what the fabric of what City of Pearland is? Um, yes, you know, I understand that this could be, or potentially we're not doing a multi, you know, three-story stacked units. That's one thing I, I let Rob, my neighbor knows, like, you know what? If this, if they are going to develop something, yeah, maybe probably something like this is kind of what we want them to develop. But is it going to work here on this particular property? You know, and that's for you guys. That, that's on y'all's shoulders to make sure that there's developers not trying to squeeze in something for potential growth, because this, I'm sure this is private investor money. This, this ain't, this ain't, you know, me, Benito Valdez, forking out $30 million to do this project. This is a private development. People put their money in this, you know, is it real estate backed, I'm almost positive, kind of, kind of deal. So, you know, there, there's not one sole person that's really got, uh, oh, what, what can I say? Just a financial burden to do this and make sure it's going to work. This could, this, this thing can be built. It can be at 50% occupancy and they probably still consider it somewhat of a success. So this is something I want, you know, I ask of you guys to, to consider the functionality, how is this project going to work for, for, for the near future and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Um, Mr. Jim Mooney. And then after that will be a Mr. Kevin Hunter.
Good evening. I'm Jim Mooney. Live at 915 Postwood Lane. I spent, uh, better part of my life, 50-something years living at 1542 Stone Road, which is southeast, I'm sorry, northeast of this development. Uh, I understand people's worries about flooding and so forth, but we should have gotten a lot worried about it sooner. Uh, when the Beltway went in, that presented a dam that held water from running off these people's property. McCard Road, the state didn't help us out much with that. They did dig a big detention pond on the north side between McCard and Clear Creek. So that will be some help. But these people are also going to have to go before the drainage district number four to get permits. And I guarantee you, they're not going to let any more water flow off of that property than what's going now. The natural flow of that water runs from the south end to the northeast property line. Like I said, I've been here since 62. I've seen the, what, you name a flood since 62, and I've seen it flow through there. And it comes from the southwest corner of that property to the south, uh, northeast corner and flows on down towards Stone Road. Uh, maybe the drainage district could help if they put, uh, the ditch that runs along Stone Road at an angle instead of flivel. Most of y'all I know don't realize this. It's an eight-foot deep ditch. When it fills up, the water's stagnant. The only thing that- The only thing that drains the water out is the suction pulled off of Clear Creek as it's flowing. There's so many things that are going to be tied to this. I just wanted to say I do not think flooding will be a problem with this. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments.
My name is Kevin Hunter, 2510 Nicholas Drive, Pearland, Texas. I'm in favor of the proposed plan. I think in this community, as a small business owner, we need to offer options for people that want to hire on in the community to work as well as live there, raise their kids. It's either live in a neighborhood that most of them cannot afford, or they have to stay in an apartment. And I think any option that the city can provide would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. We have a Mr. Stephen, do I say Knippel? And then Mr. Bill Cowles behind Mr. Knippel.
Thank you. My name's Stephen Knippel. I reside at 3923 Hanbury Lane, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I'm here this evening to speak in favor of and offer my support for zone change, 24-7. While there still seems to be some improvements, there are always opportunities. Still, my support is unwavering. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And Mr. Cowles is next.
My name is Bill Cowles. I live at 3412 Shady Crest in Pearland. I have been a resident since '79. I wasn't born here, but I've been here a pretty long time and seen a lot of changes. And I'm speaking in favor of this zone change.
Thank you, sir. And that brings us then to Mr. Don Valentine. And behind Mr. Valentine will be Drew Dietrich.
My name is Don Valentine. I live at 1202 Woodchase Drive, Pearland. I've lived here for 30 years. I think there is a need for more townhomes, and I am in favor. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Mr. Dietrich. And then behind that is Mr. Sampson.
Hello, my name is Drew Dietrich. I live at 3522 Pine Valley Drive here in Pearland, Texas. I have lived here since 1995. Been here a long time, seen a lot of growth. I tell you, as a business owner in this area, I have employees that cannot afford to live here. Not a single one of them can buy a house here. The median price is $380,000 per house. I'm in favor of this, obviously, in the growth that it will help. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Mike Sampson, Michael Sampson. I live at 6109 Ravenwood Drive in Pearland. I am 100% in favor of this project. I just had my son move down here, and we're trying to find him affordable housing. He moved down here from Missouri, and it's tough. It's tough for young people, 32-years-old, and a good job and struggling for affordable housing. I don't want him going somewhere further south. I damn sure don't want him going to an east side of somewhere in Houston. Keep him right here where he's working. Appreciate it.
Thank you for those comments. And next I have Mr. George Fishman. I can't read Fishman. Well, I know you. How are you, sir? Name and address for the record. And then behind that will be Mr. Armbruster.
My name is George Fishman. I live at 3406 Hampshire. I've been here since 1996. I'm in favor of this project, and I'm going to reiterate what Drew said is, you know, you can't find a house in Pearland right now for under $300,000. The median income out here is about $115,000 for a family. They can't afford a house in Pearland. I've got kids that would love to have live a little closer to me. But living in Pearland, I can't do it because of the cost of housing. And some affordable housing, kind of like an apartment, a nice apartment, would be a good addition to Pearland. And like Drew said again, people that work here can't live here because of the price of houses. And so we need to do something for them.
Thank you, Mr. Fishman. Mr. Armbruster.
My name's Jeff Armbruster, 4608 Ray Street. I'm here to speak in favor of this zone change. I've lived here all my life, and I am one of the people that couldn't afford to buy a house here. I rented for a long, long time. And fortunately, I got someone that I was able to buy a house and remodel it and do it that way. So I do support giving the opportunity to the people who, you know, don't make as much money as most of the other people around here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Gwen Lysol. I hope I said that correctly or close to. And then Mr. David Smith behind that. Behind that. That wasn't nice. Behind her. And then followed by John Lysol.
Hello, my name is Gwen Lysol. I have lived in Pearland over 60 years, and I love Pearland. And I am in favor of this zone change from SR12 to PD. The city's comprehensive plan identifies this space for urban living, which is intended to this property and housing spaces, included higher-density options. So the PD allows for flexibility while requiring higher-quality designs. And this is in the best interest of our community. That's why I'm in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. David Smith, is that right, or did I skip somebody, didn't I?
That's right. David Smith, 3907 Ivywood Drive, Pearland, Texas, 77584. Been here since '92, and I'm in favor of the zone change.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lysol. I got the name right that time?
Yes, sir.
I cheated.
It's a tough one, believe me. We've been called everything from Lysol to Pine Sol to you name it. Anyway, my name is John Lysol. I live at 3103 Nottingham here in Pearland. Lived in Pearland since 1959 when my parents built their home on this property. I'm in favor of this zone change. So these very, very nice townhomes can be built there so that our younger people that are moving to this area with jobs, especially on the west end where we have medical facilities, so they have an affordable place to live other than an apartment. These are homes. These are townhomes. They're three bedrooms, two and a half bath. They have an enclosed garage, so they can feel like they're living in a home, not an apartment. I lived in an apartment for three years because we couldn't, my wife and I couldn't afford to buy a house here in Pearland at that time. And so this gives them a feeling of home. I want to say something about drainage. I was a contractor for 43 years. Here in Pearland DD4, we'll make sure that no excess water drains off this property without going into the retention pond. And then it'll be pumped into the underground pipes that go to the two new storage units. They won't add anything. The problem with drainage to the south is there's not enough drainage along Adamo Lane. And it's been that way as long as I can remember. So I approve this change. And I look forward to these units, these beautiful units, being built in the right place here in Pearland. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I have then Mr. Charles McGee, Mr. John Bray, and then Michelle Hunter after that.
My name is Charles McGee. I live at 2425 Calrani Drive, Pearland, Texas. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. I'm in favor of this zone change because I do believe we need the housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Bray again. Mr. Bray.
Good evening. My name's John Bray. I reside at 310 North Elder Grove, the lakes are countryplace. I have worked and resided in Pearland since 1966. I'm very in favor of this because back in the '60s, it was very, very hard. It was only two apartment complexes back then. And like John said, this is townhomes. It's a whole different aspect for families. And I approve this. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bray. And that brings up Ms. Michelle Hunter. And after that will be Shirley Hunter.
My name is Michelle Hunter. I live at 2510 Nicholas Drive, Pearland, Texas. I am in favor of the zone change from the SR12 to the PD. And I echo everything that everybody else has said in favor. But I'd also like to address the traffic concerns. I personally, from experience, I live directly behind the entrance of Shawbridge Apartments. I don't know how many apartments are there. There's at least 50, 60, 70, who knows? But they're not all coming out at the same time. There should not be issues with traffic because they have different schedules. There's three or four maybe in the morning that come out. I mean, there's not going to be issues for the lane when people are coming because they're not all going to come out at the same time. So I don't believe that's a problem. As far as Adamo Lane not being a city street, we know it's a city street. The owners currently gave way of their land so that they could make it wider. Maybe the city needs to consider that in the future. But as of right now, I believe that it can handle the amount of traffic that it's proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Ms. Shirley Hunter. And then after Ms. Hunter will be Madison Smithers.
Well, I know you've heard from a lot of hunters, but I was born a Lysol. So you heard from my brother also. And my desire is for Pearland to always grow. I've been here since 1959. I was nine-years-old. I'm now 75. And not only do I love Pearland and love that it's going to grow and bring in more families, but my husband had an aunt who lived here for 101 years. And she loved Pearland, and she also instilled that in me. My husband's family is an early family in Pearland. They're the Hunter Martin family. And they believe that Pearland should always grow and be open to all walks of life. And I feel that this project is beautiful. And I think that I don't want to put harm to anyone, and I don't believe this would. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. 101-years-old. Ms. Smithers?
I agree with this project. My name's Madison Smithers. I address 7709 Timberside Drive, Pearland, Texas, 77581. And I agree with this project because, like other people stated, like not many people make enough money to buy a house. And this would help, like with other people who can't, like, get a house and they don't want to live in an apartment. And also, it would, like, get more business, and like, it would just, like, help it grow. And also, at first, I would admit I did disagree, but like, other people, like, proved my points wrong. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. I have Michael Jenkins. Then I have Clayton Smith and Jennifer Meyer.
Good evening. Michael Jenkins, 1841 Adamo, 77581. I'm in opposition of the townhomes being built, of the zone change. I do live on Adamo. I moved there in '08. I'm on a few acres there. And I think one thing that hasn't been mentioned tonight is Adamo is a dead-end street. So all of us, we have to exit one way, which is on the north side going up to McCard. The drainage is already bad. I remember a few years ago, a car got stuck in a ditch, and it blocks everybody in on Adamo. So the drainage, the width of the street is a problem, and with some other things. So I'm in opposition of it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Mr. Clayton Smith.
Hello, I'm Clayton Smith. I live at 1801 Adamo Lane. Bought it from Jeff, not on the service list, so I apologize if I rehash some things. Also, in addition, I don't know what the change has been made with respect to things like the material that the sidewalks are made out of. So some of my comments here may already have been addressed. With respect to many of the people that are supporting this, none of them will be affected by this in a meaningful way. May increase business for some people in some manner or the other. But all of the negative impacts of this will be borne by the people that live on Adamo Lane. The description of Adamo Lane is really that it is a barely paved road. It is not to the required specifications for a city street. And they have added an exit to go right out onto Adamo Lane, which will destroy it. It's already got potholes all over it. But anyway, enough about that. With respect to the water flow, it's unclear to me, based on the materials that were available on the website, exactly how that works. The retention pond is literally built at the highest point of the property. There are no catchment areas shown. There is no piping diagram shown as to how the water that actually falls on the property will get into the retention pond. It specifically states that in the case of an emergency overflow, oh, I'm sorry, in case of an overflow with a catastrophic rain, the water will drain onto Adamo Lane and also onto McCard. From every indication in the paperwork that's available, it's going to do that anyway. There's nothing shown about how the water will get into the retention area. The XIBA clearly shows the elevations and that that's the highest point of the property. So I think that with respect to the drainage, that has not been adequately addressed at all. In fact, there's very little about it in the application. Exacerbating that, at least in my mind, is the impervious area calculation. I didn't find any specific figures with respect to that. It seems like that they were made into large areas. For example, the areas that are shown as being common area seem to exclude all of the sidewalks. Unless those are taken into account in the impervious calculation, that figure is going to be artificially low. Thank you for the commission's time.
Thank you for those comments. It's Jennifer, I think it's Meyer or maybe Mayer? Meyer. I had it right the first time. And then after that, Ron Mitchell.
My name's Jennifer Meyer. I'm at 12418 Thayman Drive in Santa Fe, Texas. My mailing address is Dickinson. I'm here on behalf of the Lysol family. I'm their real estate agent. And also in support of the city of Pearland. Being on the edge of the fourth-largest city in the country, growth is inevitable. And the only thing we can determine is how it grows. These are townhomes for rent. They're not apartments. What that means is... What that means is the land is underneath the unit that you live in, so it's not stacked. And I think this provides a good opportunity for people who want the feel of living in a home without the headache of homeownership because it's become so expensive. It's good for senior citizens who may not be able to take care of a yard and home maintenance. It's good for younger people and small families that may need a more affordable option, but they want the feel of homeownership. And also I see it as a place for professionals who may work in the city or in Pearland. And they want to have the feel of living in an area like Pearland, but be close enough to work. And those are the, that's what I envision this as. This project is an opportunity for Pearland to increase its revenue, not only through taxes, but by money spent by the residents who live in these townhomes. And it's an opportunity for Pearland to grow in a more desirable way. The LaSalle family built their home on this property in 1959, and I'm sure they never imagined Pearland to grow the way it has. But the growth is what it is. And I believe the city of Pearland should grant the family the opportunity to sell this property, Mr. Hassan. I believe it's in the best interest of their family and also in the city of Pearland. I've worked with Mr. Hassan for a little over a year. And I have faith in everything that he wants to do with this property. And I believe in the project, so I'm definitely for it. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. And that brings Mr. Ron Mitchell. And then after that is Mammon Matthew. And I'm so sorry, I can't read the last name. Okay.
Hello, good afternoon. Ron Mitchell at 6231 McDonald Park, Pearland, Texas, 77584. I am in favor of this, this project. Just a coworker and I were just talking today. How do people starting off, coming out of college, coming into the workforce, afford living? My 25-year-old son, I spent months searching for a property for him. Turned out to be an apartment, a very less desirable apartment, apartment, excuse me, because he couldn't afford anything else. And today, it takes almost two incomes to barely get by. So to have something like this versus multi-apartment complex would be great for those young families that are just starting, having babies, you know, that don't want to be on the third floor and have a sense of home. I am in favor.
Thank you for those comments. Name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. Mammon Matthew Cherry in 2010 Zizatail Road, Pearland, Texas. I actually live in Avalon Terrace, which is south of the proposed development. Gentlemen here said, mentioned earlier that the most, the people who are most affected by this are those who are buying homes in that area. A lot of those, a lot of the developments in that specific three residential neighborhoods are standalone homes by long-term homeowners. I have, only have two concerns. I am personally against it. My first concern is build-to-rent generally requires a lot of resources, long-term investors, that are able to operate these property developments for a very long time. These are not homes that are sold in a few amount of years to the renters. They're simply transients that come in and out. People that are affected by these developments long-term are the homeowners who buy expensive homes. In my case, our first family home, my family is right here, and we are the ones who are most affected by this. The second thing is the sponsor of the project is Brilliant Equity. Their historical investments have been in Nitya Capital and Cordova, et cetera. Those have specialized in primarily low-income neighborhood apartment complexes. So the big question I have to ask Brilliant Equity as a sponsor is, this is your first partnership fund. Yeah, what kind of long-term history do you have managing build-to-rent homes in an environment that takes 10, 15, 20 years to manage that? Nitya Capital is not sufficient because Nitya was founded by someone I know, and they've had multiple years of operating track record. So again, my question is, how does the councils expect to manage a property owner who does not have a history of owning these transient, low-modern income tenants, tenant-townhomes over a couple of years? And the second thing is, how much diligence have we done on the sponsor Brilliant Equity's ability to own and operate and manage these assets for 10, 15 years? Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Believe that's, that's it for the green cards. If anyone filled one out and I did not call your name, please signify by raising your hand. Seeing none, is there anyone else? You had a card and I didn't call your name? Oh, you have the card. Go ahead, we can pick it up from you. Well, actually. Thank you.
My name is Danielle Chima. I live at 1006 Tennyson Drive, Pearland. I also own the boat shop right next to the property that is, we are reviewing. There are a couple of things, obviously I'm opposed to this being built, but there are a couple of points that were brought up. One is transient, a very good word for the people that are going to be moving into this project. It's going to bring more theft to the area, which has not been talked about at all. I think this is a bad thing for the Pearland area due to that. We already have enough problems with the road being widened. The other thing is the traffic. Owning the business where we're at, the traffic in the mornings and the evenings, going from Adamo to McCord, or to Cullen is completely backed up all the way to Adamo every morning and every evening, trying to leave out. In front of our shop, we have a turnaround for people to turn going from Stone Road all the way to, or actually all the way from Pearland Parkway, all the way to Cullen. A lot of people turn in front of our building. It's a, it's a no-in turnaround for people. That is going to be a turnaround for everybody going into this apartment complex. The apartment complex has been talked about on the entrance and exit on the Adamo side is only being used for emergency vehicles. The road is not accessible for emergency vehicles. I know they've talked about widening that road or having the project widen that road. Great, but what happens when those, you know, they come down that road, use that road to turn into, none of the people that live down that road can get to their homes. There's going to be the water flow issue. We all know that. We all know there is a problem in that area for that. I'm just completely opposed to this because of these, these, these things in particular, theft. I think that's going to be a huge issue in this area, and we don't have the room for this. We also have apartments or townhomes, I'm sorry, they're not apartments. They are townhomes across the street that once again have been mentioned that are not rented out yet. And they're giving four weeks free away and still can't run them out. They have 135 units still slated to be built. Why are we building more right across the street when they're slated to build more? They have not done so yet. Why is that? Because they're not renting out. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. Is there anyone else, whether or not you filled out a card or not, is there anyone else which is wishing to speak for or against? Anyone else wish to speak for or against? Seeing no movement, we'll move on in the agenda because we can't go backwards. That is a staff-commission applicant discussion. Commissioners, who'd like to go first?
I'll go first. Okay, so this is one of those times I wish we had the fire marshal here so I could ask questions. But, and maybe this is something that we can get answered to later on. But if they do have to fight fires off of Adamo to access those townhomes, is there a plan, does engineering, is there something in the criteria of fire code that says that they have to make improvements to Adamo so that a fire truck has access?
So Commissioner Hendricks, that's actually within Chapter 3 of the Unified Development Code that says whenever a development has a substandard road that it is adjacent to, that it would have to bring at least half of that roadway into conformance. So eventually they will be able to, you know, have access onto Adamo to be able to bring a fire truck fully around the development.
Okay, so that would be a requirement if this townhome development was approved through planning and zoning and city council? They'd have to make improvements to Adamo?
I would say that from the UDC perspective, half the lane has to be there from a planning purpose. From the fire code, if that is a necessary secondary access, entire width of the roadway needs to be there if it's fire code-dependent. I don't know, I haven't done the review. I don't know if it's fire code-dependent. That will happen during the building permit process and the plating process. But if that requirement, well, either of those requirements would extend at least a portion of Adamo from McCord to the edge of the property, south.
That's good to know. My other question is stormwater conveyance, is it possible that we can say, hey, we preliminary approved this as long as their connection is to McCord Road and not to Adamo Lane's ditch system?
So that can be asked as well. And just to add to the Adamo Lane, it would be required to be curbing gutter. So that would have, that would improve the drainage up that side.
Okay. Yeah, so then they would have to make sure that they, their storm sewer system had enough conveyance for Adamo area, everything that's draining into it, plus the apartment complex.
Correct.
Okay.
I was gonna, I think I would have said it a little bit differently, but that's what the lawyer says versus what the engineer says. And I'm sure the way he says it is correct. But we wouldn't be able to prohibit drainage on Adamo because if they're building Adamo, they have to build drainage that goes with it.
Yeah.
So yes, drainage is going to be impacting Adamo. It should be impacted in the, you called that positive?
Positive. That's good to know. The other question that I have is, does the owner know what the average topo elevation is? Where's the landowner, developer, representative? Do you have like an average topo elevation out there? So how do you plan to address the mitigation? I know you're going to address fill mitigation because City of Pearland has strict rules.
Correct.
So does BDD4, but I was just curious because I see you have foundation on grade. So are you all going to, are you going to address that?
Absolutely. And it's a good point to bring up on the stormwater management. Just like any large construction site, the post-development situation is going to be an improvement because you are managing the stormwater flow, you're getting it into that pond, you're grading the whole site. You're also improving the roadway on the east side. And then you're conveying it to a discharge point, which also has to be analyzed and be effective. And so the land, as it sits right now, is going to be graded. We're going to excavate, grade, make sure we're managing the water flow. And so I, you know, when everything is said and done, again, this starts to go through engineering review. That's another hurdle we still have to pass. It's going to be an improvement over what's there now.
I think my question was more related to fill to the 500-year floodplain. What was y'all's, do y'all have a?
We do have a topo survey. I don't remember off the top of my head what it is. We have done a topo survey and that contributed to this design. That was the first thing we did, was a topographic engineering design survey.
Okay. I'm not opposed to townhome development. I'm sorry, that was all I had for you. I'm not opposed to townhome development or more housing choices for young people coming out of college because I understand that they are not going to build or afford a house. But I'm just curious also, I'm sorry, maybe one more question. What would be the rent? Because if we're talking about providing more housing choices, what's the rent?
It's a good question. So far, our studies indicate it's going to be just north of 2,000. But for price, on a price per square foot basis, these units are a lot bigger than what's being provided on the other side down the street. And the other thing is, again, comparing to that property being three-story versus this being two-story, it's a lot more, in terms of younger families, smaller families, and giving them more area, more legroom. The third thing I'd bring up is the density. So I know we've already talked about this, but 73 units versus 200-plus across the street. We're trying to manage that exact question you have. If we bring too much supply in one exact location versus slowly over time bringing that supply, that is what the city needs. So we wanted to make sure that we do that. Now, can we rent this for $14, $1500 a month? We can't do that unless the land becomes free and construction and labor costs become free. It's simply an output from the economics of what the labor costs are, what the material costs are, and is this a viable project economically for me or for anybody else to do? So unfortunately, the rents will be, and I said unfortunate because I cited the, you know, the numbers of 14, 50 is what's considered affordable in that sense. But really, it has to be at least $2,000 for this to make sense.
Okay, thank you for answering that. So lastly, is it ever possible to have a PD where it's not a build-to-rent, where they can actually physically purchase the townhome? And then like, you know, real estate investment? Because I thought that's kind of what we were striving to achieve with this diversity of housing was for younger people to get into homeownership. But I'm sure there might be some rules that would prevent that?
No, ma'am. You can have a community like this that has a sale option. There are ways to structure that type of thing. This one with the proposal does not do that. As to what we're trying to achieve with the diversity of housing or mid-middle housing or affordable housing, I think that's probably best left to community development. I'm not going to touch that. I would just say that there is a way to structure this type of a development without it being a build-to-rent community.
Thank you for answering that. Like I said before, I wish this was definitely more structured to an investment opportunity for young people coming out because rent is not a long-term investment growth opportunity for them. But again, I've heard everyone in this audience, and there's definitely a lot more people that are for this. I hear people complaining all the time about finding somewhere to live and still live in Pearland. So I'm going to be in support of this, but in the long term, I mean, if, I'm way more in favor of having opportunities for young people to buy into a townhome and invest into it. And I just think as an owner, you're going to take care of your product. You're going to take care of your, they're going to take care of your townhomes better. So that's it. That's all my comments.
Can you remind me again why we didn't do the TIA study? Is it, is it that there's, it doesn't meet the guidelines for the number of trips?
So it still hasn't been triggered yet. So we're requiring a TIA worksheet at the beginning. And if it does trigger a need for one, we will request that. Regardless of the fact, we're still requiring those improvements along Adamo.
Perfect. And then did we ever get an answer on the square footage of the clubhouse? I just wrote down 2,100 with a question mark. I remember y'all saying something about 4,000 or 4,100. I couldn't find it.
We, our original document had the 4,000 figure, but the 2,100 is the actual building. So Steph, we're going to correct that in between now and when we present to council.
Okay. Thank you.
More rhetorical question, but are all Pearland residents who rent transients? Are only those in townhomes? There a certain amount of rent you pay that doesn't make you a transient? Or no matter what you pay, you're still a transient if you don't own your home? Kind of impression I got tonight from a couple of people. I appreciate staff looking at the infrastructure. Obviously, yes, the speakers tonight were heavily for. Those against were more closely tied to the project, neighboring properties, et cetera. A lot of infrastructure questions, which I think you've addressed. I think a question we get to sometimes with zoning that we didn't really talk about here is that we zone the property, but the development still has the requirements that go through before a building permit could be approved. So there's still the Unified Development Code, which has a lot of requirements that need to be met prior to actual construction that don't necessarily get tied into zoning of the property, which is what we're doing here tonight. I, you know, I've been a proponent of greater diversity in Pearland for a long time. I, you know, I've been a proponent of greater diversity in Pearland for a long time. I think this, I would support, yes, additional ownership. I think, I think we need more, more in the ownership realm, but I think this is still a step in the right direction. I would point to the comprehensive plan that we just adopted, I guess a little over a year ago, that had plenty of opportunity for public input and which called this to be a higher-density area. And so I feel like we're doing what, it's our job, yes, to consider what the neighbors want, but to consider what's best for the city as a whole. And so I would like to, at some point, once we're done with our initial comments, talk about the amendments for the recommendations from staff to further, I think, refine the project, but I'm in favor of it. Thank you.
I wanna, first of all, say thank you to all you that spoken. I also wanna go on record, as part of the record from the first meeting in April, I made the motion to postpone our actions until this meeting, which later on, my apologies for making that for four weeks rather than the next meeting. Understand, Robert's orders, that it should have been the very next meeting, my apologies to that. The question I have for staff, if you'll put those four bullet points back up, that on your recommendations, that, to me, most of all of these are minimal, and I believe this is something that the developers can achieve before council meets to make action. And if that's, I see you waving, yes. So with that, I'm in favor, that's good for me, if they can do, meet these four additional information that is needed. Is it five? Okay, it's five, I didn't see the fifth, the fifth. That if they can attain those before the council, I have no objections. Thank you very much.
So I guess, for clarity, there's four items, and I don't wanna say it wrong, because I do that a lot.
Mr. Chairman, I can clarify for you.
Please do.
There are four items that were identified as recommendations for enforceability, along with five items that were straight staff recommendation for a better design, which is objective, however, with a PD, the intent is to have better design practices in place. So there are a total of nine staff recommendations, five plus four.
I was about to have to take my shoes off to add. For me, this is one of those items that I can see positives and I can understand the negatives. I have, I hear both. As Commissioner McDonald stated, you know, there were in favor, more persons speaking tonight in favor, geographically speaking, there were more against than for. We do weigh heavily on our, on our comprehensive plan. We spent many a night reviewing with a consultant that put it together, and we, many times went parcel by parcel, but if not, we went very small geographical area discussing things. McCord is a new road, so it's very difficult to understand what that new road will look like 20 years from now. So I did hear some, one of the comments I wrote down, the need is not there. Typically, we have the same discussions amongst ourselves when we have a car wash. Don't we have enough car washes? Do we have enough car washes? You know, I haven't seen any go out of business, so is that our measuring stick? You know, so we go through, I'm not an expert on when too many townhomes is too many, when enough BTR build-to-rent locations are too many. I'm not that expert. I have to assume that the, that the developers of some of these sites, BTR, townhomes, single-family, large lot, small lot, they have to do a study that gives them, that study will give them guidance on if they're going to be successful in this project. A lot of the financial institutions, money is hard to get right now, so you're limited in your financial institutions, and they're looking for reasons not to lend you money. I'm seeing agreement there. And I think you have to give them a study that says, a market study that says, this will be successful because of these 27 reasons, or two reasons, or 10, or what have you. So I believe, I have to believe that that was accomplished. The traffic issues, if we improve Adamo Lane, I think it's gonna be a lot better from a traffic standpoint, because I believe you won't have as many people exiting straight onto McCord, perhaps the, they'll figure out that Adamo's more safe that you get out, and now you can just make a left instead of a U-turn, because I'm full agreement, too many U-turns in an hour is gonna cause a major accident at some point. And the issue of, I would agree also with, with one of the speakers tonight, that 5:00 PM, it's backed up, and a couple of times, it was, for me, it was to Adamo Lane, and somebody trying to make a U-turn is going to be difficult. I would agree completely with that, and somewhat dangerous. Flooding, I just wanna say this, and I know we have a flooding expert here, we have engineering there that handles that, but typically flooding is not even in our purview, drainage is not in our purview. We're zoning, as was stated, we're zoning the dirt, and we're zoning the use on that dirt, and if it makes sense, if it's forward-looking, if it's, if it just meets our comprehensive plan and what our vision is of the city. Flooding is more of an engineer question that'll, that'll come sooner. We can vote this dirt, and we could say we're for it. I'm counting the votes, I think that's what's gonna happen. And if they cannot meet the flooding criteria, if it doesn't make economic sense for that, they would either have to come back with a different site plan, a different project, or they're not going to construct. To me, it's that, it's, so it's not in our purview to say, well, we think it's gonna keep that street flooded, and that picture that was in this of the flood was impactful. It shows not very good drainage there, so I understand the concern. ISD, someone's comments, it was closer to the beginning comments. So you know during our comprehensive plan review, and when we had the committee, one of the members of the committee was Mr. Berger. Mr. Berger is now the superintendent. He started out not a superintendent, he was promoted during our meetings, if that gives you a timeframe. Mr. Berger made the comment to us on multiple occasions that last year, not this calendar year, the one before, was the first time that the ISD had more seniors than kindergarten students. Think about that for a second. Our schools are becoming more and more empty rather than fuller, as has been in the past. We've all seen the extradition of buildings in schools, they were very impacted. That to say that, that Mr. Berger, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, he was in favor of more compact residential, because they need the kids in the schools, and these, these type developments will put more kids in the seats. So I can't say whether he'd be for this particular thing or not, but I just, I wanted to make sure y'all knew that comment. To me, that was very impactful in the way we thought, for me at least. Just a question for staff, and it really is kind of a non-issue here, but I did hear 135 more units are available across the street, is that correct? Does anybody even know that? And I don't know, how do you know that?
Chair, we haven't reached out to, and we don't do monthly or yearly studies on availability, so we wouldn't have any way of knowing that at this time.
Okay, so if they by chance came back and said, by the way, in our agreement, we can put in 135 more units, y'all would be able to verify that, but for now, it's an unknown. They also have a lot of room for general business, I believe, was passed, and nothing's happening there either. So the crushed gravel trail issue that was brought up, for me personally, I'd much rather see a crushed gravel trail that doesn't absorb water than nothing. The entire, for me, the entire purpose of having a nice water feature is to put a walking trail around it for the people that live there to walk around it. I'm hoping that's not the case, that they, that they couldn't do something and it just sits there as a wet detention that only two or three units get to look at.
So, we're not against the crushed gravel. What it is, is they're proposing to do a 10-foot crushed gravel, and the maintenance permit is 10 feet itself. We'd rather see a smaller crushed gravel and wider maintenance permit if need to.
Perfect. So allowable, just not all 10 feet, so that you get some, perfect.
Correct.
All right. The only other observation I have is the renditions that we saw in the presentation that, you know, we looked at this weekend. So what I count there is 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8 dwellings. In our typical townhome, if I'm not mistaken, our typical townhome regulations currently state townhomes are three to six units. That's not true? I made that up?
I believe it caps out at 12 units.
Wow. All right. I am confused then. I thought it was three to six. I was just gonna ask if you had heartburn with it, but if it says, am I getting old? I, every day. That's all I have. Is there anybody else wishing to say anything else?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the previous motion to include the nine recommendations from staff as part of the approval.
Second, Commissioner Echols.
Can you remind me if that's the same two that, no, it is not. Okay. So it's a different procedural. Any discussion on the motion? All right. Hearing none, we'll call for a vote on the motion to amend, not the original motion, on the floor. So all those in favor of the nine staff recommendations and additions, please signify by raising your right hand. That measure passes unanimously at 6:00.
Chair, if I may, one of your questions I just wanted to bring up, just because it may impact anybody's vote on the issue, and that is whether there's additional capacity across the street. I don't have the exact numbers for capacity across the street. What I can say is that there's an original Lake Park development, that is what is primarily filled out, except for the general commercial going along the outskirts of it. There's a vacant lot next to that that is part of the PD, that is owned by a group called Lake Park Phase 2 or something of that sort. But because it is part of the original PD, I believe that it anticipated a second phase, and I think that that's the capacity that Mr. Potts and one other person had mentioned. So you had specifically asked about that following up on their questions, so I wanted to give you an answer before y'all make the vote on that. Of course, if and when that phase comes into place, as a PD, it has to get renewed, because there's not been the development out there, and it also has to go through all the appropriate criteria when it is considered.
Thank you. Thank you for that. Always full of information. Thank you. So we have, we have now an amended motion on the floor. Is there anyone else wishing to speak for or against, or make any comments? All right. With that, we'll take a vote on the original motion. All those in favor of the?
You said "original," and I think you meant the amended motion. Sorry, wanted to clarify.
Yes, "original with the amended motion for the zone change 24-27 with staff recommendations." All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Measure passes unanimously, 6 to 0. All right, that will bring us to a portion of the, of the agenda items called discussion items. And if y'all want, we can wait a couple of minutes, if y'all wanna clear the room or hang out, whichever. But the next item will be the, discussion items will be city council update. So whenever staff feels like taking that on, if you wanna wait a couple of minutes, that's fine, too.
Basically, it was lather, rinse, repeat from the April 14th meeting for the April 28th meeting. So it was second and final reading for the Cullen mixed use to general business for 8402 and 8422 McCord Road. That ended up passing on consent agenda. And then, we also had second reading for the MUD 16 with the general business R3, SR12, and suburban development. That was also on consent agenda. With that, Chair, I'll pass back to you.
Thank you, Chair. That brings us to the city council. We have two meetings on May 19th. We have the city council and P&amp;Z joint workshop, and also the next regular P&amp;Z meeting. Is there anyone that knows they cannot be here?
I will be out of the country, sir.
So we have two. You got that? I know you keep roll, so. All right, if that's it, if there's nothing further, let's adjourn this meeting at 8:17 PM. Thank you all.